June 11th meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission will please come to order.
Yes.
First item of business is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Have you all received your copy? Do you have any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Yes.
I have no specific changes to the agenda, but I do want to make an announcement that in the paper originally it was announced that we'd have a public hearing on the Public Works Facility on Jacksonville-Cato Road. That public hearing is canceled. The wrong notice was put in the paper. We have put a notice in the paper that it was canceled, so we will not be taking that up this evening. Just for your information. Item number five.
Proposed land use planner vision, 8800 Brockington.
Okay. As submitted previously, we essentially have a report here that deals with some of the property's geographic. This has not changed since the prior reports. However, one thing that is missing in some of the previous reports between and at a week in discussion during our last meeting. That might be.
Use this other one.
Can I use this one?
I apologize.
It is only going to go so far. Turn it on. Well, I will do my best to speak like this. The graphic you see on your screen right now basically represents what you had been shown previously, and that is you have an institutional land use as adopted by our current land use map. This report also goes a little bit further in that it combines the requested land use change and also deals with the requested zoning change. If you'll recall, the last meeting we had dealt with a zoning change request, but of course needed to dovetail into the larger policy issue, land use change first. This report essentially concatenates both of those requests because they run very closely with one another, obviously. So that's the nature of why this report is crafted the way it is. It will look very much like the ones you have seen previously. The one big change, if you'll notice at the top, it basically deals with both the zoning and the land use concurrently, and there's what the request is from what it is meant. Also in the report, if you scroll through it, and I'll do this on the screen.
But for clarification, will only be due in this next public hearing of land use.
Correct. Because only the city council can deal with the actual zoning change itself. Between the last commission meeting when we took this matter up, as well as today, we have a future land use map. Future land use map was drafted by one of my counterparts at my firm, Mr. James Walden. He's been working with the vision plan for Sherwood, and while not adopted, one of the things that we needed to see, at least from a draft document, is what we had been looking for, and that was some sort of change in land use that might be occurring on the periphery of this parcel. Because this parcel, as you can see in blue, still is shown as institutional, which is in blue. However, if you look on the west side of this property, you can see how, at least from a policy perspective, it's starting to recognize Brockington as a commercial corridor. Now, most of it already is, but there are portions of it, at least over time, that have continued to progress that way. And then the future policy map, you can actually see that, and that's why this graphic makes an attempt to call those changes in land use policy out. So that's what we have available to make decisions off of right now, independent of what the planning commission may want to discuss. This is just something that we have available to us. You can take that at its face value, but that's what staff decided to do as far as a report change. Staff goes further into the report and simply starts to speak about the 2.38 acres relative to the entirety of the parcel. You'll notice in black that the entirety of this parcel is not included in the official applicant's request. However, my understanding from some discussions with the planning commission chair, and then we can talk about this publicly tonight, is does the commission want to recognize the entire piece from a land use change perspective instead of leaving a portion of it out? That's something that you all can discuss tonight. But from a staff's perspective, seeing as Brockington is transitioning from a policy perspective to a whole commercial corridor, or at least at the adjacency of the land use, we do support at this time going from a single-family residential land use to more of a higher-intensity commercial corridor for Brockington at this location. What ultimately happens at this site, independent of a land use change, remains to be seen because we haven't seen anything at this point. We're just dealing with larger policy at this time. So the staff report essentially does support a land use change and ultimately would support an upzoning to a commercial zone if the council saw that fit. So at this point, I'm not going to read directly from the report, but I will be happy to entertain any questions or happy to help any discussion that you all have.
Do you have any questions at this point? Okay, the issue is, should we change the land use plan? And if we should change it, change it to the council's originally requested parcel or change it to two parcels? If we're considering changing the land use plan, this is largely a public hearing. We will now open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to comment about this proposed change of the plan. Saying no interest, I call the public. Gentlemen, it's time to make a decision on what we want to, how we want to fix the land use plan, the vision. Commercial as recommended, if you wish.
That's my, I'd explain that way, and I think we should do that whole area, this commercial, it'll fit right in with the corridor. It was right at the beginning of the.
We need a second on that, or?
Is that a motion?
I will make it a motion.
I will second.
The implication of this, I think it's twofold. One, it will change the land use on what is currently shown there as institutional or public, and it will also be a recommendation to the Vision 2040 Committee to also change it, and a recommendation to the city council to approve it by resolution. Is that understood? Take a vote.
Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Bruno. Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda.
A zoning amendment at 8800 Brockington, lot 1 to C3, JWJ.
Well, the report is essentially the same. It would be the same report for a bulleted item because you do need to separate your discussion between land use policy and the implementation of that land use policy, which is, both cities in the United States, zoning. Right now, the applicant has requested a C3. We do not know ultimately what the use or what the tenant might or might not be, but C3 is their requested zone, and based on the report, staff, that is bendable to changing to a C3.
Do you have any questions before we have a public hearing?
Was the discussion about the whole block or what's in black at this point?
Very good question. So the applicant right now is only asking for a zoning change on the 2.38 acre, is not asking for a zoning change on that eastern 1.37. Gets into issue of, okay, ultimately, either a land use or a zoning recommendation. What do you do with the rest of it? There is a single-family residence there. It seems to be well-maintained, not in disrepair. You're allowed to have single-family detached by right in a commercial zone, but, you know, do you have these slivers left? What does that do to contribute to the overall redevelopment of that space?
Basically, that would mean that residential unit would be a non-conforming use.
Legally so.
The residences on the 1.37 that's remaining, right? It's not, is that where the line is?
It's not part of this applicant's request. Now, that doesn't mean that the planning commission and/or the council, for that matter, could make a different recommendation, and zone whatever acreage they felt was necessary, whatever zone class they felt was.
Okay, this requires a public hearing. Has anybody wished to speak to the proposed rezoning of this one parcel? If you will, please sign in.
My name is Steve Jacob, along with my family, JWJ Investments.
This one?
Okay. And we own the property that's in question at 8800 Brockington. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you today. We have requested the zoning of just that block, but frankly, that may just be a misunderstanding on our part. Our intention is that this property will in whole be commercial, but for now, we have a single-family house that's there. Originally, it was a parsonage. We spent a fair amount of investment remodeling it, fixing the house up. It is rented, it's rented to a great family. But our concern and the reason we only requested that portion of the property be rezoned commercial is because we weren't sure if the whole property was zoned commercial, would that render the house obsolete as a residence? I think what I heard this gentleman saying is that it is allowed, and I don't know if that means it's allowed during a non-conforming use. So as long as, as long as that house remain, if we could continue to rent it until that property was redeveloped commercial, we certainly have no problem rezoning the whole thing commercial. We would hate to see a family displaced or a house rendered obsolete should they move out eventually. Would we be able to re-rent it if it was zoned commercial?
Answer is yes, you'd be able to continue renting it as long as you made no changes to the property.
To the property, but the tenants could change, that wouldn't be a problem. Then we certainly have no problem rezoning the entire property to C3 if the commission sees fit to do that, or just this portion, either way, it's acceptable.
Well, your basic options, in my understanding, are this, if the current zoning stays as residential R1, then if you ever decided to put some commercial use there, you'd have to rezone it. If it's rezoned now to C3, then it would be a non-conforming use. So basically, your call.
And as a non-conforming use, that doesn't prevent us, it would just prevent us if we had to come in and, if the house burned and we had to rebuild it at that time, they would say, look, you don't really, don't need to rebuild it as a residence. It would, something of that nature. But outside of that possibility, it could continue to be used as a rent house until.
Correct.
Well, certainly, we would, we are amenable to rezoning the entire plot, C3.
Thank you. Hello, gentlemen.
We've rezoned the whole thing while we're at it here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to rezone both of those parcels to C3, which is consistent with land use. Public hearing's closed. Thank you.
You read.
I mean, like the motion. We're good.
April.
Yes.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. The motion passed. Next item.
Preliminary plat of lot 1, recched for partial addition, that's surveying.
Kevin.
Okay. To start off, there is no official address from engineering permitting and planning. I spoke to the current planning, not been any official address generated from there, although the assessor's office has one address, it used to be a building there, and so the address in your report simply came from an old assessor's point file that probably is no longer. However, the parcel ID and the subject property that we are speaking about, so just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. You essentially have two parcels of record combined together reaching roughly 10 and a quarter acres. They are zoned C3 and R1, so collectively, both of these parcels are split between two different zones. The applicant is Mr. James Butler, he is the surveyor, and it's a preliminary plat, commercial in nature, to create a 1.49 acre commercial parcel legally separate for the .46 acres as Rainbow Drive right-of-way with approximately 8.26 acres remaining. If you look further down into your report, you'll notice that there's the graphic that I spent a little time with, and this was before they'd actually submitted a revised plat after this report went out to you all in an email, and I did not make any changes to this graphic, but the biggest change that they made in their submittal between this report and today was twofold. One, they legally did describe this 8.26 acre residual. They didn't do that in the first plans, but they have done that. So right now, you have a legal description for all three entities that they show. The first being the lot 1 at .49, the other one being the .46 acre right-of-way, as well as 8.26 acre, what I'm calling remainder or residue. That's not something they use, that's language that I use, that's what's left. But right now, what they want to do is they want to essentially extend the boundary line here on this existing parcel record that straddles the R1-C3 line, and essentially extend it downward, right to the north side of that, of that right-of-way. So while you don't have a creation of a new parcel, you have essentially the expansion of an existing parcel, and that's the one that's approached through here. The report does make reference to this, you know, to me, this looks a lot like a boundary line adjustment, if you, but they are replating this commercial. And so I think the ultimate intent is to come in at some point with a preliminary site plan for commercial development, but that's not what's before us now. What we're looking at is a, is essentially a replat where you take an existing lot of record, parcel here, and make it bigger to, believe this is a typo, it's actually 1.49 acre, not .4. So that's, that's the ultimate size of this thing after they slide it down. And so because of some of the changes that I saw on the plat, this was one of those reports that while I didn't email it to you for the record, I wanted to make sure that I provided some redline changes to you all. I am recommending as staff that we do approve it and read through some of the things that they've addressed that I've already made reference to. The one thing I want to make sure you all are aware of is item number four. The zoning map amendment should be submitted to change the entirety of the proposed 1.49 acre lot 1 to C3, and you can approve this plat. You can approve this plat even if the zoning is not cleaned up tonight, because the zoning lines may just be, you know, a geographic error. It could just be a mapping error. The lines fall the way the lines fall. That eventually would have to get rectified if they go forward through land clearance or permitting. So because the zoning is what it is today with the advent of technology, that could be the nature of what we're dealing with. So that's why I'm making a point to put this into the report, so that, yes, you can approve the plat as submitted, that's all we're getting, with the idea that, you know, you are going to have to eventually zoning up. So here's your revised graphic. At the 1.49 lot 1, at .46 Rainbow Road right-of-way, then you have the remaining 8.26, all legally described on the plat they submitted to us, and I do have a copy of that in a PDF if you all want to see it on the screen. But you can see here that the parcel is actually bigger. This is a lot of record that has gotten bigger. You have the right-of-way, which during our discussions at PRC, the city is not wanting to necessarily maintain that, so all it is is just a right-of-way. It's not a public right-of-way. It's not something the city says it. They do want to separate that legally from the remainder of the 1.49 lot 1. That's the conclusion of the report?
I disagree that this, the boundary of the zoning districts can be changed because you've created a new parcel, and that new parcel straddles an existing zoning boundary. And in fact, the entire, the entire 10 acres has to be rezoned to C3, because that R1 and C3 splits the whole thing. You could take a chance, I mean, ideally, you would change the zoning first, and that way you don't take a chance that the council might say, no, we don't want to do that, and make any kind of investment in anything prior to the zoning being correct. Or you can go ahead and approve a preliminary plat, knowing full well that you cannot get a final plat, you cannot develop anything until the zoning's fixed.
The application before staff is that they want to have a commercial plat approved. You know, it's preliminary in nature, it's not final plat. We do recognize that it's split zone, this is at the preliminary stage, not a final plat.
And that's for the entire 10 acres?
No. What they are asking for right now is they're trying to replat .49, well, 1.49, taking the .49 piece now and making it larger, represented in red here. Look carefully at the top of this graphic, see here, this is the parcel that exists today, and they just, they're making it bigger by plat. Now, the zoning lines aren't changing. All it's doing is adjusting that one commercial lot to make it bigger, but it doesn't alleviate the split zoning aspect that I'm referencing.
City engineer, have any comments on that?
The preferred process here would be to have a development plan that would show what's going to happen on the entire 10 acres, more or less. We do see that, that the intent is for it to be commercial, obviously. And we have had discussions previously that this 1.49 acre lot 1 has an immediate disposition. I mean, they're looking to, you know, they have a customer looking at this. However, I do understand that the remainder of the 8.29 acres could be one lot, could be two lots. There's no commitment at this point as to what that has to be. It depends on who, what square footage is needed by the next applicant that comes in to do something in that area. Cleaning up the zoning is, is an absolute requirement at some point, and I do understand that the preliminary plat is, the preliminary approval is preliminary, and certainly, they can't actually transact it without it being a final plat. I would like it to be noted for sure that the right-of-way is not a street. It's intended, I believe, to be a street, but at this point, there's nothing for the city to be accepting for maintenance because it doesn't exist. Typically, in a, in a final plat, all of the improvements will be made for all utilities, all the streets, sidewalks, and everything in place. In this case, if it's simply this one lot that's being enlarged, all of the accesses are from Highway 107, and all of the improvements are made by the builder, such as sidewalks, et cetera. I must, I believe sidewalks are there now. Andy, do you, or do you?
Some sidewalks along 107.
That was with the widening of 107 when it happened, so those were there then, so there is some existing sidewalk now, so the actual balance of the improvements is just going to be for whoever comes in to build a business.
Could I, I'm flooding the water, ask one question, sir?
I mentioned what is better is because it's cumbersome to keep up with things that are conditional.
Yes, I'm Brooks McRae, I represent the owners of that property, and what I'm a little concerned about that I want to convey to you was with the preliminary plat that we are hoping you approve, we wanted to, and that's what I want to clarify, we wanted to come back in and put a bond up with the city and the engineer for the improvements of the road, the sewer, the water, anything that is required on the plat. And at that point, we would like, and I wanted to see, make, ensure that the city engineer, once we put that bond up, that we could file that final plat. So I know this is a preliminary plat application, subject to all those improvements and any requirements you have, but we very near term, where our engineer has got those amounts and quantities, and I was going to sit down with Richard and determine what that bond amount was. So this particular purchaser that we're dealing with is trying to close, I think they've had preliminary discussions with you on their site plan and building permit, I know that's not here tonight, but I'm a little confused that if you approve the preliminary plat, that I won't be able to come in and put up the bond for the final plat because you, the zoning's still unquestioned.
That, that would be correct. The zoning issue came up, that's, that's in recent days, I mean, that's something that we've discovered and, I mean, it's there. So it's, it's a real issue, it's got to be resolved. Our regulations do allow for posting the bond.
Okay.
In lieu of the improvements, that is, that is written, I mean, there's a process for that. So we could arrive at a number for that, and again, since this fronts 107, I'm assuming it fronts 107.
It does.
Aye.
Okay. And your access is off of 107, you're not relying on anything with that .46 Rainbow Road right-of-way, you're not relying on it at all with, with lot 1, so that anything in the future that would be constructed, then we would be looking at the construction of, of the road.
Lot 1 will have access and ingress, ingress off of Rainbow Way or Drive.
Well, it'll have a provision for that.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't, I'm assuming you're not building, you're not building Rainbow Road, that's the reason for posting the bond?
Well, we're going to build Rainbow Road, and we'll put the bond up for that.
And that's a near term?
Very, yes, immediately.
Are you going to build Rainbow Drive prior to final plat?
That's the issue.
I'm going to put the bond up for Rainbow Drive, the completion of it.
So that you can get a final plat on lot 1 prior to, prior to building the street? That's what, that's what you're telling us?
Yes.
I'm just making sure.
Is the city prepared to accept a dedication of that as a public street?
Without it being in place? Because if you just want to plot, plat lot 1 or replat lot 1 and finalize it, just do lot 1 and take the right-of-way off the drawing, then we don't have to talk about the bond.
That is, that's something that I would think would be a better thing to do at this point and less confusing. Because you're still allowing for the road, and it doesn't prevent the business from conducting business coming off of 107, is that correct?
But they just.
Or do you have to have, do you have to have the access on the road to actually conduct business?
We have to deliver that road. For the buyer. They won't purchase without that road being there, long-term. I mean, as long as the plat's filed, they'll close, as long as we have the bond up for the road, sewer, water, and everything else. Again, we would maybe back off the 1.49, we need the zoning and the plat for that, but the remaining area, if we need to do the traditional posting and zoning for it, not opposed to that, I guess I'm more confused about the sliver at the top being residential and that, the remainder of it being C3.
That is an issue that has to be resolved.
But the city council could approve that.
They're the only ones that can, yes.
Okay.
But we'd have to hold a public hearing.
Right.
And recommend it to the council.
Which can, you know, which can't happen until next month.
Because of advertising requirements, we have to put in the paper.
I mean, the zoning issue, that has to be fixed before anything can happen, because you can't build something on an R1 zone as commercial use. Fusion has been, all we're talking about is that one lot 1, why are we looking at 10 acres? Why, why don't we have a preliminary plat, even if part of it is undeveloped and undetermined, so that lot 1 is part of a plat?
Yeah, we could live with just the 1.49 today, but the zoning is what I'm trying to, I don't want to delay us 30 days if I don't have to.
No, you've got to. There's no way around it. You can't have a zoning hearing until next month at this meeting in July. You can't have a zoning hearing until next month at this meeting in July.
So what's the confusion on the zoning?
You, you're a plat, you're trying to plat a lot that has two zones on it.
Okay, okay.
And we, we can, we can approve the preliminary, but that doesn't do you any good because we can't approve the final until you have a rezoning hearing at the July planning commission that will have to ultimately go to the July city council meeting. Don't let me talk out of turn.
Well, if y'all wouldn't mind, consider approving the preliminary subject to that zoning change, then we would, we would go ahead and complete the bond and, and, uh, come out, back in for the zoning application.
Well, if, if you made application for the zoning change, we get the advertisement, we can hold the hearing in July, and the preliminary plat is ready to be approved in the July meeting. And we've got the bond figured out and it's ready to go. Then all of that could happen in the July meeting and then go to the council, in the July council, which would be the fourth Monday of July, and then it would be all cleared up.
It would, it would be my, in my opinion, the best to just table this for this month. Clean up the preliminary plat, that you're plating one lot without the Rainbow Drive right of way, and come back with just the preliminary plat for that and a rezoning at the same time in July.
And, and I, I guess I would have to agree to that because right now, the zoning regulate, or the subdivision regulations say that all proposed subdivisions shall conform to all applicable laws, including the zoning ordinance. So we really can't approve something that doesn't conform to all the laws. That can be taken care of in July.
Yeah, well, and kinda help me out here a little bit. Um, we wanted to start construction, so I, I really can't start construction without some type of preliminary plat. And I don't wanna wait for June, July, yeah, that's, that, um, will screw up a lot of timing. And it's just, I know that's not y'all's problem, that's mine, but I don't mind having a preliminary plat that's contingent upon later zoning. So if I could go ahead and at least get the preliminary plat acted upon so that this purchaser knows that we're gonna be doing these improvements and we start those improvements and put the bond up.
The grading permit can be issued. We, you can, you can do grading on your land without, without a plan.
If I don't give their engineer a preliminary plat approval, then they're not gonna proceed, period. So that's my, I don't really wanna leave this meeting without having some type of preliminary plat approval, even if it's subject to us getting the zoning clarified.
I don't, I am not aware of any other issues that would prevent this from being approved. If, I mean, from my, from, from what I see, we, if the zoning is correct and we go through, you know, and bring it in as a submittal for that preliminary plat for lot one, I don't know of any other issues at this time.
Yeah.
Because we're covering everything with a bond, and I'm not aware of any issues. So as far as having some confidence in this thing going through, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent it from being approved. But that's just me being aware of it, I don't know.
Yeah, they're pretty, because these are big regional developer on a lot of convenience stores. And they just, they, without the preliminary plat, they don't put, they won't, they'll skip it and go to the next. They'll come back, but I'm really, and, and at your discretion, I understand, part of it's zoned correct and parts not, and I'm willing to, to have a caveat in there that we come back and clean all that up with the public notice. But if you could at least approve the preliminary plat, subject to cleaning, maybe all of the property to be zoned appropriately. If that's appropriate.
Do a sign in, please?
My name is, my name is Jim Butler, I own Butler Surveying Company at, in four eleven highway one oh seven in Spearwood. We're the surveyors on this. Uh, we originally, and this is, I think, Richard may agree with me, about the third drawing we've made, uh, there was a question about, why did you show this back here? We, we wanted to present to the commission the overall piece of land just for, as a reference of, hey, here's what we're looking at that's going to eventually be developed.
And you'll probably final plat different lot sizes as, as they want to be sold, I, I got that.
Commercial and industrial lands.
Understand.
You do not sell by lot.
No, sir.
You sell by the needs of the client. So that's why we, we did that. Now, uh, and I guess, you know, in looking at the, uh, zoning, we knew that part of that property was already zoned C three. So that's why they, they took that portion. But, uh, then we found out later that, well, there was another little track up here that's C one, I mean, R one. So, uh, and this back here, uh, part of it was R one. So we realized we're gonna have to go before, uh, the city council, uh, who has, who is the only authority to, uh, rezonate, uh, which I personally don't see a problem. But, uh, Rainbow Drive is going to be a public road that will be built to city standards. Once it is completed, uh, the maintenance bond, I think, I don't know what service requires, one year, two years, will have to be put up. And once the time period is up and the street is, is still in good shape, you know, it doesn't need to be fixed or anything, then the city will take over the dedication of that street. And it will be a public street. Uh, so that, that is why it has its own legal description. Originally, we included it in the whole thing, uh, but we were advised to come back and separate it, give it its own legal description. So, so it will be built, city standards, uh, and approved by the city engineer. And then through the process, as it, uh, is built, and then the period of time as it laps and, and the city engineer, whomever, says, yes, the street is ready to be accepted by the city. The city council will then, uh, accept the, uh, dedication and it will be a public street. So, uh, but the, the preliminary plat, to me, uh, and, and as Mr. McRae explained, uh, because of the timeframe and which, you know, nobody really has control of, I guess. Uh, you know, and, and any of you that are business people, know people come in, you know, we want this, we've gotta build this, we gotta start now, we gotta, you know, get to work now. But, uh, we would like to have, uh, preliminary plat approval. And our, the project engineer for the seller is working on the, uh, amount of money that it's gonna take to build the street and drainage and any other thing, uh, you know, that has to be, uh, built. And we'll put the bond up and, uh, then, once the bond's put up, uh, you can go in then and start building the street. And, and, uh, you know, with water, sewer, all that is on site. Uh, and, uh, you know, that, that bond will be enough to cover. If the seller doesn't go through with his, uh, end of the deal, then there would be money, the city would call in the bond and, uh, uh, finish it themselves, you know? So, uh, but to answer the question, that will be a public dedicated street. Once it has been built, gone through the maintenance program, uh, timeframe, then the city council, uh, will take action to, uh, take over as a public street and maintain. Uh, you know, a, a, any other questions that you might have, I, you know, I, I understand the, the zoning and all of that, but that one little sliver of, of R one just popped up out of the clear, very blue, you know? We assumed everything was C three along there. Uh, there is some other C three, I think, in there, but we intend to go ahead uh, and probably rezon the rest of it, you know, to C three all at one time, get the entire ten acres plus, uh, commercial.
So, and then Jim, let me kind of jump in here. The, the problem one, proceeding with the preliminary plat now, I know this is zoning, but to make the preliminary plat conditioned upon us having the appropriate public hearing, would it be any type of courtesy to entertain, to have that type motion, proceed with the preliminary plat, subject to obtaining the zoning, I guess, is our request?
Right, the, the purpose, the purpose of the, uh, of doing the preliminary plat is, is for the commission to look at the lot, you know, say, you know, or make sure, uh, it, it meets the standards as far as having the improvements, utilities and all of that. That signifies to the seller, okay, we're not gonna make you change the width of it or the depth of it. So you are now, uh, authorized for your project engineer to start doing, you know, the various designs which go to the different departments, Central Arkansas Water approves it, uh, Sewer Improvement District two thirteen, uh, approves the sewer, uh, and then the city engineer will approve the street's, uh, plans. And they all will be submitted to the various departments, the health department for approval prior to, prior to those improvements being put, actually being put in. So preliminary plat actually tells the seller, uh, okay, it, you know, that's good, you know, and you're in ten on the street, and your utilities are in, you're gonna do a bond to cover everything. So you can now go ahead and start your design and, and start putting your improvements in. If they wanted to. Okay. So if, if any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I don't think there's any real question about whether the site design is adequate.
Other than what?
The site design.
Right.
And the issue is the plat. And whether the plat ought to be approved, given that part of that property is not zoned correctly. And what you're asking us in effect to do is give you permission to start construction on a use that, at least part of that lot's not permitted.
No, no, we're not talking about starting the construction to build it, we're talking about.
Well, the, the improvements, we are, we, we would, we'd put the bond up and we'd like to start. We'd like to convey to the buyer that the preliminary plat's been approved, except for the zoning. And we'll fully disclose that and take that risk in the event that it's not. But we don't wanna have that thirty day delay in, in this process of having the preliminary plat approved and, and now that we've found this glitch on the zoning.
Is there any issue about the city's willingness to accept dedication to that street?
Again, you can just finalize the lot and not dedicate the right of way at the same time. This, I don't think it's your intention to build the street at, prior to final plat time.
Hmm, uh, but time, no, no, no. But the time the, by time the, uh, project is completed, the street will be built. It will have to be built, so however long it takes, six months, a year, whatever it takes to build the project, the, the building, and it's ready to be occupied, yes, the street will be.
Let me, let me back up a little bit. Yeah, we're gonna put that road in there as soon as y'all give us preliminary plat approval. I mean, that's our intent. So we're gonna start on the utilities, we'll put a bond up. But our intent is to have that road in there and it's the intent of the purchaser of the property to utilize that road. So I don't want any miscommunication about that.
Whether it's private or public, whether it's private or public?
We assume it'd be dedicated to the city, you know, uh, that's how we've submitted the plat.
It would be, it would be dedicated just like a residential street.
Okay, commission, what's the timeframe on this, Mr. McRae? If, if this preliminary plat was approved, what would be the timeframe that we'd be looking at?
Our engineer, we're waiting on the final sewer dimensions, but we would start in the next two to three weeks is when we would like to start doing the sewer rough grading and, and get this complete in thirty, forty-five days because of weather and the demand of the purchaser. Uh, they, they are prepared to go as quick as we can.
You won't have zoning approval in, barely in forty-five days?
I'm not, I would take that, we would, we would risk that as far as where it is and what it is. You've got one R one portion of it. I don't think we're gonna get any opposition from the, the staff or commission. It, it's right there on highway one oh seven. Uh, y'all might pose the death of the ten point three acres, but we'll come right back in on the ten point three, we're not in a rush on it. So, uh, if you, I, I, I guess I'm confused a little, is the entire ten point three not C?
Only the eight, eight something is C.
So the remaining part is C.
Now, what, what we haven't done, actually, on this graph, is we haven't shown exactly what acres this is. You do show it in red, your proposed one point four nine, it's split zone. Autumn R one, it recruits the interior to, to its front. Seven. Then you have that portion on the north side that's C three. And then you have that portion on the south side.
Yeah.
So, you know, just eyeballing it, you're looking like maybe forty-five, fifty, forty-five, fifty-five or forty-sixty.
We saw an updated drawing that showed where the zoning district boundaries were on that property.
They basically fall with what you're seeing in the dark. By a calculation. See if they're actually provided. But it is definitely, large portion is, um, R one and another part.
Just for clarity, approval of the. Just for clarity, approval of the preliminary plat would only give you permission to do site preparation. Is that correct?
Uh, you're at.
Yes.
That's. Yes, it would, it would be, it would be allowing them to go in there and put in the improvements that are required for utilities, streets and other infrastructure and get it ready, uh, to be sold. As, and when it's final platted, then it would be ready to be sold as a, as an improvement.
And that has to be complete at that point or have a bond.
Correct.
Okay.
But he doesn't get a building permit for the proposed.
That's a separate.
Business until the final plat.
That's a separate issue and we can't issue anything except on the final plat.
And the final plat won't be approved until the zoning's fixed.
That's correct.
Gentlemen, it was your pleasure.
So making me understand, you, best case scenario, you don't get a building permit till the end of July.
I can, I can.
Again, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we give preliminary, uh, plat approval.
Hold on a second.
Is that with the understanding that they will come in and request a zoning change?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, no question.
But that needs to be on the record. Got it? Got it? Okay, you've got a motion and a second. Just to be clear.
Do I have one question, sir?
I am Andrew Hicks. Uh, I, I will represent the owners of the future C store, uh, as an architect. Uh, I just wanted to confirm that if, if the preliminary plat is approved tonight, that, uh, subsequent, we could get a grading and excavation permit?
Sure.
Or, or we'll be able to get that, not us, but, but, uh.
Sure.
He, he can, the city engineers confirm that.
That's correct.
That would only be in preparation for a later building permit that we understand would not be issued until, uh, until the zoning was all aligned.
Until final plat.
And final plat, yes.
Correct. Correct.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, to refresh your memory, the motion is to approve a preliminary plat conditioned on the submission of an application for rezoning to C3 at the July planning commission meeting. Is that correct? Call roll. No. Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the subject property is at 3107 East Keel Avenue. It's on the north side of Keel Avenue. Um, you'll notice on your graphic here that you have, the aerial imagery actually is a little bit dated. Those two parcels that represent the subject property are actually cleared and they no longer have any building improvements on them. They are still served, obviously, by City Water and City Sewer. Um, right now, the existing land use is single-family residential. It's established that way. Um, actually, I'm sorry, it's commercial, general commercial right now with the C3 zone. The adjacent, uh, land uses are single-family residential to the north, general commercial to the south, uh, and light commercial, uh, to the west and to the east. Uh, the proposed use is actually a pharmacy, medical marijuana dispensary. Uh, for state law, if you recall, there was a movement afoot in the state to, um, authorize, uh, medical or medicinal marijuana and that if you go forward through the state application and permitting process, then you obviously have to go forward through your local land use and zoning, uh, processes. And while the city does not have specifically a definition for medical marijuana, it is legally have to, has to be treated the same way as it would any retail pharmacy. So the report speaks to it as a pharmaceutical use, so that's how the review is being done. Essentially, you have this subject property, it's a little close up here in your graphic. Um, I won't read word for word, but essentially the applicant's wanting to do 4,000 square foot, um, commercial building. And, um, I do have elevation drawings that they've submitted in a separate file, but it's outside of your report. Uh, the site plan that they did submit initially and as part of this report, uh, there has been some revisions to it. Um, I can throw that up on the screen if you'd like. But independent of the site plan that they show, I had made a comment about them needing to articulate this as a, uh, one-way ingress only, I'm sorry, um, egress only, exit out because of the way the parking spaces are angled. Which they have done. This report actually provides a little bit of a red line report. Um, so you can see here that if you're coming off of Keel Avenue, this ingress and egress on the east side will be two-way. And there's gonna be two-way traffic, um, on this side of the parcel. See all the requisite parking is here. Um, as you go along its frontage with Keel Avenue, you can see that these are 45-degree spaces. Um, and then what they have shown actually is gonna be a one-way out. So there will not be movement in this site at this curb cut. It will be two-way here, but a one-way egress out from the interior of the site onto, onto Keel Avenue. This is a superimposed graphic of their site plan with respect to proposed building envelope as well as the base building envelopes. Uh, there are C2 zoning on either side, east and west. Uh, this property is zoned. Bottom of the graphic here just shows a Google Street view of the site. We still need to get a legal description of the proposed commercial lot. Right now, you have two lots of record and go through that process. You still need legally describe that as one inch. They have yet to do that, or at least I did not see that on the late plan they submitted. Uh, as far as parking modifications go, they have provided specific methodology about how the parking gets calculated, so they have addressed that. Um, the second issue about what's required versus what's provided, um, I have done a little bit of a red line here. And long and the short of it is, if you do use this calculation based on 4,000 square feet, you end up needing to have seven required spaces officially, uh, with two ADA space. Um, they actually provide, uh, 19 standard parking spaces, um, with two ADA spaces separate from that. But if, essentially, the site plan has to be redone before they go to building permit that separates 19 standard and then goes to two ADA accessible. As our parking regulations are based on standard parking, what you have to provide for ADA is separate from whatever the standard spaces are. So that's the reason. Um, the other thing, and while they do show some plantings on the north side in terms of civilization, uh, there isn't any, uh, elevation. Um, there are some descriptions about the tree planting. The applicant, of course, come up and describe that. But I am making a point in support to recommend there be a full landscaping plan before they go to permit that does visually screen and do provide that buffer as required by regulation. So essentially, it's approved with modifications and to address all the items that have gone unaddressed at this point. And I'll take questions.
What type of building they gonna put up there?
This is a, um, applicant's here, but let me go into my files. This was provided date. This would be the, the building that faces Keel. This is your south elevation. They're looking from the south. This is what your building would be. So you have some brick facadeting. Um, I'm not sure what the material is, rest of the glating here, but it definitely looks like a recliner. Uh, full brick from floor to top. It looks like it's a nondescript, uh, commercial building. I don't see signage on the plan. But then this would be that east side or east elevation. This would be the side. This is what you, that's the west side, which is like sod, albeit brick. And along the rear of the buildings, you're in the residential neighborhood. You didn't have a visual street. Didn't have landscaping. This is the side you presented.
Richard, you know if, if the, uh, materials used on this will pass materials requirement?
I have not looked at the materials, but I believe we discussed in, uh, Land Review Committee that they were, uh, the plaster, ephesus, that type of materials. There's not any metal. There's no metal on that.
Right, ephesus? That's just a red flag. It will have.
What my question is.
What he's suggesting is that there be a landscaping plan as a condition of, of approval. This requires a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to make a comment about this application? Hearing none. I close the public hearing. You have any questions?
I think that'll make a good use of those three bare lots to add, like, make a motion to approve with the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. There are any further discussion? Call roll. Yes. Hi.
Bruno?
Hi.
Dylan?
Hi.
Hi. Next item.
Preliminary plat at 118.
Okay, this is a 1.91 acre parcel. It is at the intersection of Country Club Road and Highway 107 on the north. Oh, okay, messed up with my geography here. It's more on the southwest side of town, but it's basically on your west side of town. Um, and you can see here on your site graphic, um, the parcel in question. Um, right now, it's improved, um, with an existing building. I believe it's a vacant flea market, um, that they're going to want to redevelop. And future land use map, as well as this one, uh, the currently adopted, actually, future land use map and the current one both show this as commercial. And the zoning right now is C3. Your existing conditions graphic essentially shows that there are two buildings. They are to be removed. And you can see along North Hills Boulevard and Country Club, uh, Road, uh, that there is quite a bit of openness. There's some slight curbing like you would see at a normal intersection. One thing I did want to point out, you have to forgive the offsetting when I made this graphic, but you potentially see where they have three envelopes shown. Uh, this was the original graphic, actually, where they had proposed a car wash, a fuel canopy, five pump, pump fuel canopy, as well as a food store. Right now, we actually have a revised site plan that replaces the car wash, uh, with a, uh, quick service restaurant. And the reason being is because a car wash is not allowed by right in the C3 zone. They would've had to rezone this in C4 in order to have a car wash. So that came up very quickly. So the use is not gonna be a car wash as shown on this report graphic. Uh, it is going to be a quick service restaurant. And here, um, you guys have a copy of this, but this is for the betterment of the audience. Again, please ignore the car wash. That's gonna be a quick service restaurant. Five, uh, five A fuel, fuel canopy as well as, uh, food store. Um, the applicant proposes to have two-way ingress and egress off Country Club Road as well as North Hills Boulevard. This is another graphic of this. Uh, the yellow just represents, um, information that I had created from graphics provided to me. Uh, the red would be buildings, uh, gray is under existing building. This is essentially how they propose divide, uh, the interior improvements and the internal circulation from the public right of ways. That's essentially how that would look. You can also see in green, this is based on the data that we have available to us in GIS format, but also based on, you know, observation on Google Earth and through resources where the existing sidewalk connections are. And that'll be important. And sidewalk connectivity is something that we're sure happens, um, where, where none exists today. So we have the schedule of uses. We have food store, restaurant and, uh, restaurants without drive-in specifically. And this just gets into discussion about what the uses are because when you get into a parking calculation, you have to make sure that you've got it correct. Um, so we've asked them to replace the car wash with a quick service restaurant, which they have done. Um, they've done some changes with their, uh, parking table, but not all of it has translated exactly accurate. Um, we can get into that with the applicant here in a moment. Um, but we wanna make sure that they calculate it correctly and that the total parking be the sum total of all the square footage of all the buildings shown on the site plan. We did ask that they revise North Hills Boulevard vehicular access as a right-in, egress, right-out, uh, right-out, right-in, egress, right-out only. Uh, and per PRC discussion, visual guidance of striping, directional arrows, as well as raised curbing with depressed edges to enhance that driver guidance, uh, for navigating one-way ingress and egress. Recommend. Um, I did reference section 141607 for additional landscaping requirements for public right of ways. That's an item under sub-item H, uh, unobstructed sidewalk of at least five feet wide. That is something you have written. So I wanted to make sure that was placed in your report. Um, sidewalks should be provided to improve connectivity between existing sidewalk network on adjacent properties and the subject property. Um, I did note that there were some areas where it would appear to have been cut off if we left it as is. Uh, it looked like there was a proposed fence, a sort of cutoff where one would normally have put a sidewalk to keep it one along Country Club. That would be on the lower right-hand side of the graphic. So your report basically correlates to some of those things that, that I observed on the initial site plan. To that end, I can pull up the new site plan that the applicant sent us, I think it was yesterday, um, because they wanted to make sure that we were, they responded, um, to some of our comments. So I'm gonna try to pull that up. Again, this hasn't changed.
That's Maryland.
Sorry?
That's Maryland.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Wish they could use.
Okay. You can see what they've done. First of all, you have your restaurant use, right, replaces the car wash. So that's actually what they've submitted after this report was. I didn't wanna necessarily change your report that you emailed, but this is stuff that the applicant has submitted to us and which we're presenting. Again, you have your one-way, uh, in and out at this point. You do show, uh, some sidewalk connectivity, which is addressing the concern. You show, uh, that you have a parking table down here per our guidance. And so overall, uh, staff just doesn't have a problem with, with this site plan. Um, our report does speak to wanting to have maybe a few other little items addressed, but overall, uh, we're, we're pleased with they've submitted with this report.
But, sir, what is a quick service restaurant?
I'll let the applicant, uh, respond to that if they would like to. I, I can describe you what I call, that is a restaurant. They might have a different idea.
It's a restaurant where the food's served real fast.
Real fast? It'd be like a.
Kind of like my house. What's, I, I'm, I'm. Go ahead, I don't mean to hold things up. But to me, if you have a second thought here, that car wash initially, and all of a sudden you said you can't have one, and all of a sudden you throw in restaurant.
You have any other questions?
Well, I have a couple of comments. Does the Lower Rock Water Reclamation Authority really provide sewer service here? No, sir. That needs to be fixed. The gas is not central point energy, it's center point energy. C3 is not. C3 is not heavy commercial. It's general commercial.
And electricity at that, and electricity at that point is not energy, it's Northland Rock.
Thank you. You catch that? Electric is Northland Rock, not energy. And I'm confused on the notes on the existing conditions and demolition layout. Under general information, it says subdivision, North Shore Business Park subdivision. It says the same thing for the Maryland Street 107. What is it?
I'm reading from the one that was handed to me tonight.
Are we actually looking at a preliminary plat? Because I don't see a title of preliminary plat. I see existing conditions, demolition layout, and site plan. Is this something that's ultimately been recorded as a final plat? Is there more than one property involved here? And my question is, are we being asked to approve a preliminary plat?
I can stick a partial record.
I recall it being one single parcel with two separate businesses on there.
Right.
Right. Historically.
Okay, then basically, we don't need to be talking about item number nine on the agenda because we don't have a preliminary plat. Am I reading that correct?
I would, I would, I would.
The second page of what he handed out tonight has a future right-of-way dedication on it. So is that, is that the reason? I mean, but that's on the sheet that says site plan.
I don't, I, my holders, I, I divide the holders on based on the agenda and files that I received. I did not see any preliminary plat for this particular property. I did see preliminary plat for the other property that quality engineering is working. So I did not see that this particular property.
Oh, and another note that you need to fix on the, where is it? On the zoning information here. It says that the minimum front is 25 feet. That should be 40 feet. You have a question about the right-of-way?
Shows a future dedication, is that? And what they're showing as proposed future turn lane meaning is that what they're conjunction with the.
Recognizing there is the fact that we have a contract with an engineering firm to widen and improve Country Club. And they have been put in contact with one another to make sure that this site plan does not conflict with what we expect that widening to need. In other words, we don't want to approve this and get it started and then come in and then have to.
That's, yeah, that's where I was headed with that discussion.
Fair enough.
Yeah, let's not have them build something that's ultimately going to get torn up.
That's right. We're making, we're, we're having them work together to make sure we don't mess that up.
Very good. Where are we striking number nine, item out of nine from the agenda? Because this is a platted piece of property.
Yes.
We're going to discuss this as a public hearing on the site plan.
Yes. And because we're skipping nine, because this is not a preliminary plat, we're going straight to site plan that requires a public hearing. Does anybody wish, I'm calling the public hearing open. Does anybody wish to speak to this application?
Hang on for it. Do you need something done that's, that could tell?
That we have moved on to item 10.
Correct. Hearing then, I call the public hearing closed. Are there any other questions? Do you wish to say something?
Oh, I would clarify some information if I could.
You are.
If you feel like that's.
You are.
Oh, so you are.
My name is Michael Petty, and thank you for your time tonight. I'm the Quality Engineering Surveying, and I represent Development. I support the item. To, to clarify for the preliminary plat item, this, this property exists as we are in the site plan. We're not requesting any zoning changes, and we're not requesting to replat the property in this sort of way. And so I did want to clarify that aspect. I do apologize for the erroneous information on the first page. I will say that the erroneous building line, the flat building line is shown incorrect on our site plan. And we, we will correct all, all errors related to pointing out of subdivision utility providers and so forth. And I do apologize for that erroneous information. We have, we worked with Mr. Penn earlier on after we had our, our, our initial for the site plan review. He was able to share with us the proposed plans for the road widening. And we actually did modify our site plan that we brought to you a couple of weeks ago to ensure that our site would work with that future right-of-way. We also ran through Mr. Emerald's staff report, and, and we satisfied all of the items that he brought up on that. And so I'm, I'm here to answer any questions or clarify anything that may, may be confusing. But just ask for your approval of the site plan.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Is this on the first page of this handout? This existing metal buildings plat, that's where that old. Flea market was. That's going to be completely demolished.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's currently two permanent structures on the side. I think there was a former plumbing supply building. This is smaller of the two structures. And then there's a large metal building that was recently vacated from the antique mall or flea market facility. Our intention is to demolish both of those structures. I think currently right now is a temporary kind of operation of a shaved ice snowball stand kind of situation there as well. Of course, that will no longer be there with the proposed change of site plan.
Well, they, they're simply relocating it.
A person can, can probably pick that up.
Does the city engineer have any questions or objections or comments?
No, sir. I appreciate quality engineering working with us, though, to make sure that we did make provisions for the widening that's imminent, that as soon as we get the plans back and get them approved, we'll be getting that road widened as part of that sales tax bond that was passed last year.
And Kevin, it's my understanding that they have met all of the questions that you had. Gentlemen, it's up to you.
Motion to approve.
They've gone a long way. I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Call the roll. Aye. Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 11.
A replat of 9324, quality engineering survey.
Want to get a graphic of the site plan, the plat, where. So you don't have a formal report for this. You not have a formal report for the replat portion of it. But as you can see from the plat in front of you, as well as on the screen, you have four parcels of rec, you have two parcels on the north side, north, northwest part of this property, as well as two larger pieces on the southern part of this property. They're going to essentially combine the northern two portions of two different parcels into one, if you'll see as lot 1A. That will result in roughly 0.738. That parcel has one, two, three, four existing improvements, as well as two accessory buildings, all of which will be moved as part of their site. You can also see in this, they propose lot A, 2.3498. Those have existing improvements, which are also going to be removed. But as far as a plat is concerned, these do meet the minimum acreage requirements under the existing zone, which is C3. All the improvements that you see here, whether they meet current setbacks or not, they're going to be removed as part of site plan approval process. So you won't have to worry about whether you need to show non-conformance, whether you need to show whether there's an encroachment on existing setbacks, because that will be moved after you have a demolition. So in terms of lot creation, you have lot 1A and lot A. And with respect, even though this isn't necessarily the approval of the site plan, lot 1A is going to be the lot that encompasses the fuel service station, the convenience door and that canopy. That's going to be on one lot, lot 1A. Lot A at 2.349 acres is going to encompass future development. Staff report you have for the site plan shows that future development. It shows two new uses, independent of the canopy, fuel service. It shows future quick service restaurant. It also shows a coffee and a smoothie shop. For the purposes of tonight's review, you'll see a little bit of a shift in that the improvements on lot A will not be shown. They're simply going to move forward with submitting those improvements for the gas station only because they haven't secured tenants for proposed lot A. And so that's kind of the summary of why this plat shows the way it does. And when we go through the site plan review or the rest of it, why it will shift a little bit between what you have in your report, which you can see the scene. But from a preliminary plat standpoint, lot 1A and lot A are in performance and all the improvements that you see in terms of structural improvements. And of course, the applicant can ask if any questions you can have.
Would you care to get what my comments are going to be?
No, we're just on the plat.
I'm going right to the notes, sir.
Do we want to talk about the replat first? Or do we want to talk about both in tandem?
Replat only.
Okay.
I think the, the title of the plat, or someplace very visible, needs to indicate that this is a replat of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, R5, and a legal description of the Sylvan Hills addition and not map showing combination of Sylvan Hills addition. That doesn't explain anything. This needs to be precise about what this is replating in the title.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't have the surveyor's certification on it either. I mean, this is a preliminary at the point, at this moment, but at final time, it's going to have to have that.
Yes, sir. We, we will include the, the professional of records seal, as well as the certification of the document. Yes, sir.
On the legal descriptions, it says as per surveyed lot A and as per surveyed lot A. And the two descriptions are different. And I'm not real sure if they're accurate. I'm not a surveyor, so, but I tried to follow the mates and bounds, and a lot of the dimensions I couldn't find. So, but you need to check that.
Okay, we, we will review that, but that's a typo for the, for each descriptor. I mean, obviously, our intention was to provide a legal description for, for lot 1A and then a legal description for lot A. Yes, sir. And we will review that.
And this is a really small thing, but I'd appreciate it if you had Robert Middleton as City of Sherwood Planning Commission, City Planning Commissioner.
Okay. Absolutely.
That's my comments.
On the, on your legal descriptions, on the, the top lot A and the bottom lot A, which is which on that? In the text, it says lot 1A for the top part.
Yes, sir. So, so the, the top, the top legal description describes the new lot 1A, which would be the corner lot. And the bottom legal description describes lot A, which would be what we're calling the future development.
Aside from that typo in the heading, everything else is correct.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We will, we will certainly review both legal descriptions to ensure that we have not inaccurately described both, both tracks.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Eyes is not good enough to read all of them, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to read the legal descriptions here and.
You are a brave man.
I read them before we got here on some other stuff, and I got lost.
The, the final document will, will be larger. Yes, sir. I apologize for it's, it's small in text.
Basically, you're just seeking advice and you have received it. Any questions?
No, no, sir. I, I don't have any question.
No, we don't do anything. This is just advisory.
Yep.
Move to the next item. Site plan. Number 12.
Okay, this same property, potentially 3.08 acres. You have four parcels of record, which are going to platted at final plating to two individual parcels of record. Property owner, well, it's actually the applicant, Quality Engineering and Surveying. They are not the owner, they are the applicant. The existing zoning, actually, the existing and adopted land uses, residential and single family residential, believe it or not, the existing zoning is C3 and general commercial. So the land use plan actually doesn't show it as being fully commercial, even though the zoning is replaced, which is not uncommon. We will be doing a massive, as you well know, on our future land use map. The adjacent land uses are all commercial for the most part, except to the south of this property. The south of this property is actually institutional. It's a private school and church, those that are familiar with the area. The proposed use is a fuel service station. Your report says convenience store, quick service restaurant, coffee shop, but. But as we've discussed, and for what I believe to be the right reasons, we're going to be looking at the fuel service station, convenience store on the northern parcel that's to be platted necessarily those remaining uses that you'll see in. But the graphic on your screen, as well as in your report, does show the subject property in relation to Highway 107 in East Maryland. You can see those in your existing condition graphic. There's a variety of improvements drawn to it. The applicant is proposing a five pump fuel canopy, a 3,000 square foot, um, basically quick service restaurant, 2,200 square foot coffee. Um, however, do need disregard the quick service restaurant and coffee smoothie shop, because that's an S in the plan that essentially omits this, stubs this out and really concentrates our review tonight on that far northwestern. And this was the site plan that was initially submitted. So you can see the circle K would be here, your convenience store, the office and light groceries and food can be pinned to the south here. You have a quick service restaurant and coffee shop. However, they have submitted some plans that I didn't send. I would pull up in a moment. One of the reasons why an applicant can discuss this is that through my discussions with them after this report went out, is that the parking calculations that are needed to separate all three of the uses and three buildings of shown on this plan, they couldn't commit to, because they haven't had, they don't have signed leases. They don't have commitments for the smoothie shop or a coffee restaurant. They, they don't have commitments for that. And therefore, they weren't in a position to be able to articulate in detail all of the parking allocations. So on one hand, from a planning perspective, you do like to see a complete, a more comprehensive, right? Commercial site plan all at one time, if you can. But if you're in a situation where the property owners, uh, aren't able to nail down all of those uses, it might be advantageous just to deal with the known and then simply show the remaining of the acreage. Obviously, with the infrastructure, curb cuts and things that have access to that public infrastructure, all those things that we'll eventually need, still shown. So that's how this review has sort of morphed a little bit from such. Again. Are you referring to this? Well. We go to this place. Is it 10 feet?
One comment I'd like to make, and I should have made this earlier, particularly when we were talking about the, uh, well, anyway. According to the Sherwood, uh, regulations, no light from a commercial operation shall fall on a residential. So, don't put any big lights on the back of that building.
Yes, sir. And we, as far as fixtures go, we'll, we'll ensure that we're using shielded fixtures so that we have no light trespass. We'll, we'll follow that ordinance and not, uh, not allow for, uh, either project that we have this need to create a condition for residential property.
Okay, thank you.
You'll also notice in the original report that recommend, uh, recommended action based on the totality of the site was defer this site for the review. It was simply based on, not simply, but it was based on the fact that we didn't have all of the parking that we need. Parking, especially when you're dealing with sort of drive-through, which is the uses that you would have seen on that south side, you really need to be able to nail down those, which we couldn't do. So as far as just looking at the fuel canopy and the convenience store associated with that, I will just say verbally, that portion of the site does articulate the parking demand and the supply, what they're providing, if it is in performance with regulation. Um, obviously, with the rest of the site.
Have you had any discussion with the Arkansas Department of Transportation about a driveway permit for that site? I mean, you are in close proximity to a signalized intersection. It looks like you gotta modify their drop inlet.
That's correct. We, we are in preliminary discussion with them as we, as we develop the, uh, the permit drawings for this site. And so we, we will coordinate all of that to ensure that we're satisfying anything that they would require us as far as problems. Yes, sir.
Now, as a comment regarding East Maryland, that is, uh, East Maryland is being improved. You can see utilities are being relocated. Uh, this particular intersection, the improvement to that part of East Maryland has already been accomplished. So they've, they have something, uh, visible to work to.
So I have maybe a silly question, but is looking at the site plan putting the cart before the horse, since we don't have a preliminary plat?
It's possible. Yep. I mean, technically cannot, cannot approve the site plan as shown with the lot lines or the parcel lines shown, because they haven't been approved, don't exist legally.
So again, this sounds like it's advisory. It calls for a public hearing. The question is, should we actually hold a public hearing tonight in advance of a pre-application for a preliminary plat?
Would it be possible to, um, for, for the commission to make a motion that, uh, approval would be contingent upon of the, um, acceptance and, and recordation of the replat that would create the two lots? And, and the only reason why I, I make that request or, or, uh, ask the commission to consider that is our client, uh, does intend to close on this piece of property and through that closing, will execute that document for the, the re, the replat. Um, and, and we'll address all the comments that we talked about with that item, uh, prior to, you know, to that, uh, time period. But at that point, um, essentially, the, the, the two lots, rather than the four, would be, uh, created. We obviously won't move forward with anything until, uh, one, property is closed on, uh, and, and two, you know, obviously, we wouldn't, uh, move forward with anything as the, the lots exist today in the, in the current platting.
This requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open a public hearing right now. Does anybody wish to make any comments about this proposed site plan?
If I, if I may, um, just, just to follow up from, from Kevin's comments, we weren't trying to pull any, anything over on the commission this evening. Um, with, with the plan that we had submitted previously, we, we really wanted to show you, uh, in essence, our vision for what we, we do plan to, uh, to develop with the entire, uh, track, both lots. Um, but, but Kevin's correct. We don't have, um, agreements in place for the two other parcels. We do plan to come back to this commission, uh, probably very soon into the near future with a site plan for that remaining piece. Uh, and it will very much likely look like what we presented, uh, previously. But we did not have those, uh, agreements in place, and as such, um, to, to try not to cloudy the water, we just removed that out and we're calling it future development, providing that stuff.
I don't have a problem with that, but technically, what you really should do is a preliminary plat should show phase one, a phase one on the, the first lot and future phases, because at this point, you don't know if you're gonna keep it as a separate lot or subdivide it further. I mean, you might have an, an inclination to keep it as a separate lot, but at this point, you just don't know.
Well, I mean, that, that is true. I mean, obviously, that, that remaining track could be more than one lot. Um, our, our client, as, as of right now, does not intend to subdivide that lot further. But you're right. I mean, that, i- i- it could happen, and I do understand your concerns and, and the need for potentially calling it a, a phase one or a phase two scenario.
Andy, did you wish to make a statement?
Yes, um, so, Mr. Wilson, and I actually did look at this, but this was not looked at on the site plan. They do need to make sure that they have a, uh, structure to property line setback of 25 feet to the back of this. They are adjacent to an R1 zone. Mr. Wilson did bring that to my attention. They do not show that setback. So I'm not sure what my distance is on a scale drawing. They do need to ensure that you have 25 feet at proposed fence line in the rear of that circle K.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a lot between.
It doesn't matter if there's a residence on it or not, if it's zone R1.
Zone C3.
Oh, is there a C3 lot in there?
Yeah, we, we have basically a gap between us and the, and the residential zone.
There has been a revision to the zoning districts map. There was a correction made in this area.
That's correct. I recall it, our conversation. It is correct.
So there's C3, sorry. So there, so the map is correct here. You have a big, huge area of C3 to the back.
Yep. The way it was drawn and depicted had to be corrected on the map, but that was a scrivener's error at that point.
I think we just answered our own question.
Yeah, we, we did, we did a look at that after the, the meeting that we had two weeks ago, because we were fully prepared to address that condition. But, uh, uh, there is a, a, basically a buffer behind us of commercial zoning before we get to residential.
Okay, we're still in a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to make a statement? I'll close the hearing. So this is on the site plan. And again, my only concern is approving a site plan in advance of actually having a preliminary plat approved. Your call. I mean, what he's requested is could it, the site plan be approved conditionally? And the truth of the matter is, it means nothing if the preliminary plat's not approved.
Could I get clarification again from you, Michael, that this is the reason that the preliminary plat is not, you're not requesting, uh, approval of that is because the request for that would come from the owner and the owner has not closed on the property yet. So when the owner actually closes, then they will execute the replat.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So that would be coming to us in July?
Yes, and this is another one of those, you know, conditional, conditional things that's driven by real estate, uh, needs more than, than our needs.
I must confess, I'm not crazy about conditional. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I agree, Mr. Chairman, but I, I really hate to hold up something that we possibly could benefit from. I'm gonna move that we accept. We're gonna go ahead and grant conditional approval.
I'll second that.
Call the roll.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I hope we don't have enough.
We may.
We can't control rules. They can.
Do a point. Old business. First item of old business was the proposed revisions to the zoning code regarding conditional use language for public works facilities in R1 zoning district. What happened was that the advertisement for a public hearing that was put in the paper was that, was the same advertisement that originally appeared, which was for a rezon of a specific piece of property. And what was supposed to go in was public hearing to consider changes in the zoning code regarding conditional uses in R1. Have there been any changes to the language that was submitted to us at the last meeting? The only thing I question.
Technically, yes, because you had brought up the issue about the 60-day polling clock, which we can discuss tonight. It is incorporated.
Okay.
Yes, sir, there had.
There is a requirement now that a conditional use, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a progress must be demonstrated on any conditional use. And if there's no progress within 60 days, it can be shut down, the conditional use gone. I don't know what the original intent in drafting that was, because I'd never seen anything like that before, but that's in our current code.
13, 60 days, that's pretty tight.
Was there any change to the language about that?
Yes.
It was just an issue that I wondered about.
It's, you do have a lot of check downs when we, those, staff report. We could add section 14 to 10D, the conditions section, just because there is reference to the 60-day period and other portions of the code. So we felt like that could be something that we added in just for an additional layer of, of certainty.
But basically, there are no changes to the language that we were looking at last time. So what we need to do is, is simply advertise for a public hearing at the July meeting to revise, well, to revise the zoning code on conditional uses in R1. There were three items, and it needs, that needs to be what's publicized. Okay?
Well, for what, just to be clear, staff needs to be clear, the second item that you see here in the report was the item that we added from the last report. So you had the revising of section 14B, the conditional, discuss that. We discussed additional R1 zone, basically adding item form in public works building. And then, of course, that same language put into chart. One thing that was changed tonight, this report, based on uh, from you, Mr. Wilson, we're putting it in this report, but it doesn't necessarily have to stay there. Uh, if you wish to discuss that next time, that's fine. Um, but this is what the staff has put together based on input it, it has received. Don't make discussions.
And that's what we'll discuss at the public hearing.
And just for clarity, one more time, this is to change the zoning code. This is not specific to a piece of property.
Correct.
So there will not be any signs, uh, rezoning signs put up, because we're not requesting a rezoning at this time?
No, that's correct. Next item is proposed revision of the zoning code concerning accessory building setbacks.
Okay, in your report, it should have. So the staff report that you have before you is essentially responding to the discussion that we had at the last meeting. You'll look in your report, the last page goes through the exception process, and this has gone unchanged. Sherwood Permit and Planning Department shall have the authority to reduce side and rear yard setbacks to a minimum of four if it can be demonstrated that all of the following criteria are, are met. So item A, that does not change, where the sidewall height does not exceed 10. Item B does not change, where the accessory structure does not exceed 500 square feet total area. Item C was discussed at the last, at the last meeting. Basically, we don't have a D anymore. We have an item C where the accessory structure has no loft window or doors toward either side or the rear property line. Now, the language that was suggested by staff at this point dealt with buffers that are a permanent nature in, in that paragraph, which you all can read. If you'd like to discuss maybe some alternate language other than this, I do have that available. Because I do know that you had some opinions on this, and would like to discuss with the rest of your commission, I'd be happy to pull that up.
Hey, why don't you pull it up? I, I suggested slightly revising the way it was organized, not changing any of the meaning or the content. but simply writing it as how it would be inserted into the code if this passes both public hearing and the council. But not to change the meaning. And again, it's it's just in the format of the code. So you're actually adding an C. I'm putting all the stuff that was currently in there in a slightly different format.
So you still have two A, um, where you have no reduction, maybe three distance. Four feet inside a rear property line. That's articulated. It's it's just paginated differently. Same with the property line for which a deviation is requested. The verbiage here deviation is used, and that's a little bit different, but it just be different. Uh, is requested as adjacent to a permanent buffer such as conservation areas and demonstrated that exception will not cause an undue negative effect on the buffer or on public safety. Or all of the following criteria can be met. You have A, then you have the B, and then you have a list of four criteria that must all be.
And then the way I saw it was that basically there's three ways that the staff could grant an an exception or a waiver. And I just want to make it clear that the first two are real specific, and the second one, you got to meet all of those conditions to even consider it.
Number Kevin.
Just what it said.
Kevin, Kevin. Number three under C needs to be deleted.
Accessory structure does not exceed twenty-five feet.
Yes, yeah, that was the discussion the last time is we were just doing it by square foot, not a.
Yeah. And also, for that previous discussion had been about openings, and uh our chief building official brought up the uh observation that an opening could be uh just a a an awning, a structure that's an awning that has, you know, an open end, so that would be preventing that open end at a ground level. And the discussion then was that the real intent was if something's, you know, tall and then uh looking over someone else's property, that it would not have any loft windows or doors uh on that on the back or rear side, just to prevent any accusations from neighbors.
So this alternative language like to discuss of language C.
Gentlemen, discussion.
I'm just trying to make your match what uh what the discussion was. Uh, and there was number three was in the discussion. I ultimately decided to strike it through last meeting.
Okay.
And then define and then that that where became the discussion about defining that word openings is as windows or doors. That would be the only other modification. Strike the word openings and you're in red number three now to read.
Was it loft?
Loft, yeah, loft windows or doors. We will. No, no, hit the word openings out. Loft, windows or doors. In both commas. There you go. Meaning something. Like a cable or something. Does that affect?
No.
So that now matches.
It's okay if I join the conversation here while we're on that sentence. I think uh I realized after submitting this to Kevin, where it says either a side or rear property line, it should say either a side or rear reduced setback. Because the side property line that is on the open side of the yard, it's fine to put windows and doors on that side.
Yes, 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 I understand what you're saying. Yes, I agree with you. Yep.
Good point.
Got one other comment. Is it bound?
Yes, sir.
When we started this uh process on this change to our ordinance, one of the main goals was to select the appropriate term to describe what we're doing here as something other than not to be heard as a variance. And we kicked around the idea of a couple of different terms. And one of the changes that is being proposed in the new language here is that now we're going to call it a deviation. I prefer the term exception. And uh at the PRC meeting, I made kind of a case, uh and I've got the information that I took to that meeting just right out of the code book, the uh building code book, there's just instances after instance that we call this type of thing an exception. So if there's not a strong uh objection, I prefer that we use that term as opposed to deviation.
What was the other term that was being thrown around?
It was uh.
There's exemption, there's exception. Now we have.
Yeah, the exemption, that couldn't fly.
Yeah, exception, yeah, exception deviation being somewhat synonymous, the 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 exception does as a as a particular word does fit in with those other building in the building code book, and it flows better for us.
Okay. I I I have no, if you like, exception over deviation, I'm. Um, the first line of number two.
Yeah.
And exception.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Gentlemen, are you comfortable with this language going to public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I agree. We agree to death.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's a record show that we will schedule a public hearing for the July meeting to consider this revision to the zoning code. The the next item is proposed zoning code revisions in compliance with Act four forty-six. Uh, we were supposed to have a public hearing this month. I didn't get to the paper. So we will have a public hearing to change the zoning code in compliance with four forty-six at the Ju- July meeting. Okay? Vision twenty forty briefly.
Well, the good news is, uh, staff doesn't have much to discuss in terms of policy, because based on the document that we had already provided with you, uh, those policy statements haven't changed. Uh, the land use map hasn't changed, but I think the thing that everybody in this room should be very concerned with and wanting to participate in is your land use and your development policy, especially for these existing neighborhoods and those areas that are adjacent to your border. Like we've seen with Brockington, you're going to see the perhaps these institutional, these older uses that are embedded within the traditional neighborhoods. Um, you're going to want to start to take a look at those. Those are the things that are going to nibble at the edges. Those are the things you may want to take a look at in terms of land use. A lot of places that I've worked in have developed pretty detailed transition zones. Um, some may refer to them as residential office. Some may refer to them as just basically transition zones. Those are the types of things I, for this command and commission, if you're planning consultant, I definitely pay very, very close attention. The other thing I would pay as a client attention to is your master streets plan update. Um, the things that are coming through vision plan ultimately will affect all of your other functions. And your master streets plans, especially with capital improvement currently ongoing, you're going to want to take a look at those and see how your trips change. See if there are other road networks in the city that are going to change their function class. They may not. But if they do, then you're going to need to anticipate some intensification of land use. Those are definitely bring up from a policy.
Couple of comments. I keep hammering on this, and I will keep hammering on this. Is that the policies and the land use plan are going to dictate how we make decisions, both we and the city council. I explained this to the council at their last meeting. That's why understanding these policies is important. If you go to plan sherwood dot plan your city dot com, there's the map is there, as are all the documents that have been done before. I've asked for a link to be put on the city webpage to link to that site. And it that's a pretty good site, because it gives anybody that's interested an opportunity to drop a pin and say, we want a harps at this location. Or we think land use should be different here. It can be interactive. It's I don't say commonly used that way, but the possibility is there. But what's really important is that there's a map and there's documents. And we're expecting Mr. Walden to give us what amounts to an almost final product in July. Believe it was in July. And after that, we will decide whether Vision twenty forty as a committee will continue to meet, or whether we start start bringing it to this body to start having discussions and start putting it out for public comment. But we need to get this done. I don't think there's any new business. I'll take a motion.
Motion, sir.
Call a meeting of the Sherwood. Oh, we. I was I was about my call.
Hi.
Hi.
Bruno.
Hi.
Dylan.
Hi.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Now we will start the board of zoning adjustment. Roll call.
Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Dylan.
Here.
Hi.
You've already saved a copy of the minutes of last board of adjustment meeting. Are there any corrections or additions or motion?
Let's approve.
I have a motion to approve in a second.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Bruno.
Hi.
Dylan.
Hi.
Hi.
You have one item on the agenda? Is that correct?
Variance request of five feet is required, five feet rear yard setback at ninety-five oh eight middle ground, middle construction.
Kevin?
Well, I'm going to start off by simply noting that my report in yellow highlights is rear yard setback variant, side yard setback variant over the required twenty-five feet. And that's because you have a twenty-five foot required setback for the front and the side on a corner lot. The way it was brought in to staff for me was just, again, this was at no fault of the staffs, but it it didn't seem accurate relative to what the required guidance was. We can get into that in a moment. Um, so here's the subject property. See, the aerial image actually came from Plasky County G I S. Um, I didn't have access to the updated aerials, but but so this is what the parcel looks like. See that there's an existing single family dwelling here. This is all part of the same subdivision. Um, this is the corner property, and it's been recently improved, street and a sidewalk infrastructure. Um, the applicant's cover letter taken in by staff indicates that the purpose of the variance is to enable the construction two thousand nine hundred and two square foot single family detached dwelling with a three car garage. The applicant states in their cover letter that according to section fourteen seven, setback rules say that twenty-five E must be maintained on not two, but three sides of the property because it's a lot. Further, it states the request to change the setback requirements on the east side to twenty feet. So the east side of this parcel, if you're looking at it addressed here for Meadow Oaks, it's right here. That east side would this portion, they reduced it to twenty-five or to reduce it to twenty feet. Um, right now, I'm not exactly sure if that's accurate, because look in the regulations, I think you can produce interior corner lot by as much as, I think it's ten percent of the building width line. I think comes in around thirteen point seven feet. So I think you're actually allowed to have, maybe it's seven point nine feet, but what I'm saying is the way it was brought in wasn't necessarily accurate with with what was being requested. So I'm not exactly sure, based on this report, exactly what portion of the parcel they actually want the variance. Um, I know that they wanted to have a three car garage on this portion of the property. I know that they have this building envelope, which I have scaled. But if I zoom in on it, you can see that this is the twenty-five foot front yard building setback line here. You have a twenty-five foot building setback line here. That's not being approached. You have an eight foot, looks like an eight point two foot dimension to the rear, which isn't mentioned in variance happen. So if they want an eight point two and required ten feet to the back, you'd have to look up the regulation, but that seems to be where most approachment.
Right there. It's at your twenty. No, that's not the encroachment. Right there.
So on a corner lot, if you have twenty-five feet, they're requesting the twenty and.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so with your knowledge, the front is the shorter of the two street sides, not necessarily where the front door of the house is.
Well, it's address, so from my identification, the dress here is for Meadow Oaks, so the front is heating.
Exclusive of where the front door is. That's what defines the address for those purposes. The rear yard setback on a corner lot is opposite the shortest street side. Nor exactly, regardless of the orientation of the house, but the orientation of the house is what defines its legal address.
So in this case, this piece is actually the side yard.
Correct.
This is a rear yard.
No.
Front yard.
Two, you got two fronts and a rear that are all twenty-five. They're. Mm, mm-hmm. Forget the orientation of the structure.
So the variance they're asking for is twenty feet, the rear yard lower than required twenty-five.
And that's that side right there. Yes, sir.
So they have an eight point two foot setback on the side here. There's a side yard setback here.
Ten percent of the lot width up to eight feet maximum, so he's in compliance with that one.
Well, I do apologize on the record for not being completely proficient in Sherwood zoning code. Point carefully. So the applicant is asking for a twenty foot rear yard setback and lower than required twenty-five. As shown here on the diagram, um, it's a twenty-nine hundred square foot structure. I did make a point in the report that, you know, you do have similar properties in the area, ninety-five hundred Oak Forest Lane. It is a corner lot, roughly the same size as point three one, um, and it's roughly twenty-two hundred and forty-three square. So again, I'm not sure if the lot sizes and are at issue here. I'm not sure if the setbacks are at issue. Uh, basically, we're recommending denial only because of the precedent that we've started down, at least during my time here as a planning consultant, is that the hardship here is self imposed. Simply want a twenty-nine hundred square foot home. And I'm not sure where the hardship is. So if planning commissioner would like to hear from applicant, that's fine. This is just based on a strict read of of the code and how I've seen this board react to other uh like requests. So uh I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions.
Is the applicant present?
Present.
Do you wish to make a statement?
I do.
You need to sign in?
Uh, thanks for your time.
And before you begin, uh.
Yes, sir.
I need to swear you in. Do you agree to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any statement you make before this body?
Yes, sir, I do.
And the the task here for you is to explain to this board why this property is unique and why the application of the regulations on this unique property causes you undue hardship. That's the two tests that you have to pass.
Well, then I probably don't need to say anything, because there is no hardship um for this lot. I feel like it's unique because the house that it's. I feel like it's unique because the house that it's backing up to is already 25 feet away, so we're not encroaching on another house that is, it would make it exceptionally close to. But there is no hardship. It's a, it's a standard residential office. But if, if he went back to the other, uh, aerial shot where the other house is there, that house is not a side yard, so it's not eight feet to the property line. It's, it's a a long distance away from the other house there. So in my mind, it's not encroaching on their privacy that they're right. Thanks.
Okay, you've, you've heard it. Ready for a motion?
Motion to deny. Based on it is, it's like the staff said, it's self-imposed. You can either build a smaller house or buy a bigger lot.
I have a motion. Wait a second. Second. I have a motion and a second. The motion is to deny the request for a variance based on the fact that it is, the request is self-imposed, that there is no hardship, and that the lot is not unique. Call the roll.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Dylan.
Nate.
Nate.
Motion passed. The request is denied. I'm ready for another motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second, sixth.